I would like to call the City of Ocean Shores Planning Commission meeting to order. It is Tuesday, October eighth, twenty twenty four. It is two P M. We're in the Ocean Shores Library on Point Brown Avenue in Ocean Shores, Washington. May I have a roll call? Commissioner Barr?
Here.
Commissioner Bricker?
Here.
Commissioner Berry?
Here.
Commissioner Bees?
Here.
Commissioner Kern?
Here.
Commissioner Ward?
Here.
Commissioner Lawless is here. The next up is approval of the meeting agenda. Do you have a motion to approve the agenda as written?
Motion.
Motion?
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of minutes, approval of the minutes for the regular City of Ocean Shores Planning Commission meeting on September twenty fourth, twenty twenty four. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I saw a move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approved. Thank you very much. We have public communication for three minutes. There is no one today, unfortunately, in the room. Anybody have a comment from afar?
Thank you. This is Susan. Just glad to be here. Maybe have some comments later. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you. Jane, any thoughts?
Just good afternoon. No comments at this time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hey.
Mark, so, yes. May I have a favor? Could you just give me your last name since I'm taking minutes today?
I'm Beez, B I E S.
B I E S.
Barry, B E R R Y.
You have a first name.
Steve. Yep, Steve.
Carrie Barr, B A R R.
Thanks. You can find that right on our agenda. All our names are listed on the agenda. Lawless, L A W L I S. One S, not two, thank you.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so they're all listed right there.
Okay, I just need to know who's who. Yeah, you're Mr. Brick.
Mm-hmm.
You are Thorn.
Thorn.
One more. Oh, I know you.
And Nicole.
Yeah, Nicole's in.
I'm going to the meeting. I've got me to order stock and cap and everything. So no one knows who he is.
See, in case nobody's told you, you can go, the recording of the meeting, the meeting will be on tomorrow. And you can review and then choose you the best way to do the better.
Thank you.
Okay, the first thing on our, the next thing on our agenda is marketing and the theme for Ocean Shores. I had a meeting with the mayor this week and we had talked about having a town hall and the fact that we had the Business Association at our last meeting. He was very interested in that and would like to have a meeting with them as well. Jason's phone number? Steve, do you have that?
Yes, I have it.
So I, if you could provide that to me?
But I will say, I had sent it to you. To give it to you.
That's fine. So.
I will send it to you.
Super, thank you. And then the mayor would like to have a meeting with the folks that met with us last time. And then he is willing and interested to have a town hall. So that what they told us last meeting can be put out to the public as to what their plan is going forward as they gear up for a fall launch of their plan of attack for marketing Ocean Shores. So thank you for that.
Guys, just say something about what we listened to last week. I listened, I watched it again and my personal feeling about it after watching it again and listening to them, I think I was really impressed by what they presented. I think at, my personal feeling at this point is that this whole thing, this marketing theme thing right now should be in the hands of the businesses. They, especially listening to them, the vibe I got from them last week is that they're doing this for the businesses and that's, that's that they're, they're just starting and maybe we should let them get their website out. Give them some time before we have a town hall meeting. Because I think, I mean, you heard the one member said he's against, really doesn't think the thing is a good idea. And I don't, I think from, I kind of agree with it at this point. I think at this point, we should, Mark, you asked him several times, what can we do to help you? Right now, I think that's kind of where we should leave it, is what can we do to help you guys? And then when they're ready to go, you know, further with this or that, then go, go there, but.
And I appreciate, and I appreciate your comments. I really do. However, it's important that we realize that we get our guidance from the mayor and other agencies in town. And so that's what we're here for, is to help the community in things that appear to be important. So he has asked us at the planning commission to take this on. So if the mayor asks us to take it on, what do we do? We take it on. Yeah.
And I'm glad that he would like to meet with, with that group and before, because I think it would be a great idea that he hears the same thing that we, we heard last, last meeting.
Okay.
And one other thing, Jane, just to let you know, she made a comment last week about explore the shores. I did send Jason a text after that. I think the explorer of the shores is a great slogan and I did share that with them, so.
Thank you.
So we'll contact Jason. We'll get Jason and the group in a room with the mayor and they can have their discussion. And then we will plan the next step according to how that meeting goes with coordinating their efforts with a town hall. And so that's where we're at. Okay, the next item on the agenda is metal siding in residential zones. Commissioner Berry, you had said you were going to take that on. So if you'd like to lead that?
Okay, so all of you should have gotten a draft of of what I revised in our, in the code for our proposed revisions based on what we had discussed at the meetings as far as allowing exposed fasteners for metal roofing, not on primary structures or accessory dwelling units and allowing them on non-accessory structures and unpermitted accessory structures. And then also regarding the siding, allowing fastened, exposed fasteners on siding, metal siding. Just a couple of comments before, and if anybody else, I'm sure may have some comments about what I wrote, but just a couple of things. We had discussed, and I know Commissioner Bricker brought it up, that originally the the exposed fasteners was due to corrugated metal, the old, like you called the, your old. And so I Googled and I was, I watched a, I listened a little bit to a previous meeting where this was discussed. And Roy had mentioned, well, now corrugated can refer to several other types of siding. So I, I just kind of Google corrugated metal. And there actually is a distinction between corrugated with the rolls versus what the siding or roofing that we normally see now, they typically refer to that as ripped. So that's why I, I made a distinction in here that I left the, the, the the statement there that exposed fastener, corrugated metal and corrugated fiberglass roofing is not permitted. But in the permit, or the next statement says exposed fastener, ripped or architectural metal roofing. Well, and I referred, so it's basically, and so, and I, I think that hopefully would separate the two. So at that, to, to, to say, and also I had, in writing this, I, or making these changes, I did have some questions as far as when we decided that we could allow up of this, this, as an accent for metal is architectural wood? And I'm kind of asking you, Marshall, as an interpretation, would you consider that ribbed siding and architectural siding?
Yeah, I would.
Okay. Okay, so basically on the siding end of it, then we really don't need to state ribbed or architectural, if ribbed is considered architectural.
Yeah.
Okay, I wasn't sure what, how that was being looked at. Roy, I didn't, I didn't, never heard anything back from you, Marshall, but I'm assuming if you got any comments that we're saying today. I know Roy answered back and he had stated, one thing he asked about was, well, on, on the metal, I couldn't remember if it was roofing or siding or both. If we could require a warranty on the metal, the ours, I think it's R six A, is it?
Already has that.
That zone has a warranty requirement and that, that's.
I believe it's twenty five years.
It said twenty. Roy had asked twenty five, but he said twenty five, but when I looked it up, it was twenty.
In our, in our current code?
Yes, just for that zoning area.
Right.
So, and I don't know why it specified as that in that code and not any other codes, but I basically told him, oh, the warranty issue is something we haven't discussed yet. So it's something that we would have to address. And the other question I had was if we're asking for a warranty, if, if we do that, do we, I don't see anywhere else where any warranty is specified in any other material. So are we singling that up material out or not? That and and, and also I went, at the last meeting, I think somebody mentioned that there's exposed metal fasteners on some other materials besides metal. I don't know if that's something that we need to include in here also because any reference to exposed fasteners in the current code only refers to metal.
Yeah, and, and I think because there are so many different options out there for siding these days to include anything other than metal could potentially just create something that's unenforceable again. So if we limit it specifically to metal siding, you know, and most of Roy and my discussions were, you know, not even regarding, you know, more, you know, towards the garages or larger permitted metal structure components. It was about the, the non-permitted or the accessory, non-accessory structures, the smaller unpermitted stuff, because that's where we're having the problems today. And I think I'll leave it at that.
Any other comments? Any of the commissioners have any comments on this?
I, I did have one other question about the existing here. It says, and this is on the exterior finishes. The exterior of the home shall be finished, must be finished with the minimum two types of materials. I'm sorry. Oh, it says here on architectural elevations, it says both attached and detached garages must be in keeping with the home's architectural design and finishes. So in stating that, I, I ride my bike around town, town all the time and I see, I, matter of fact, on Bass Road or Avenue, there's a big pole building that was just finished. It has exposed fasteners on the siding, which is, and also as far as this both attached, what attached and detached garages, does the detached garage mean one garage or there's a lot of houses like that particular one? It has a garage, but then it also has this outbuilding too, this big pole. And a lot of houses have a garage, either an attached or detached garage, and then they also have another bigger pole barn building in that. Does that? Would this statement here refer to both structured, both garage and the pole structure?
Well, I think the, the attached garages are going to have architectural features that are inherently similar as a house. You're not going to get a lot of variation there, but, but once you take a, a structure and you detach it like that pole building. And incidentally, that pole building was one of the ones that spurred this exposed metal fastener regulation to begin with, because the building official and I at the time saw that building and the way it was finished. Architecture looked very similar to the house. It was two different colors that matched the colors of the house. And if you didn't, I had to, I drove by it several times before I even noticed it and picked, and it went through my head that this is a metal sided building in an area that doesn't allow metal sided buildings. It was that well done that it didn't stand out as a, as a pole building. So and, and then we went down this road of, we don't want to do pole buildings or metal sided structures in the residential zones and and so it went, it went to as an accent only. That's when the code was changed to allow only an accent.
Okay, so, so right now, today, that building couldn't be built like it is, right?
Absolutely not.
Is this basically a commercial building in residential neighborhood?
No, it's a residential building that's built using metal components. You see those in residential zones all over the country. But in Ocean Shores, it would be, you know, you could, you could make that inference that it was a commercial building built in a residential zone.
But if you look at the building, it's a nice looking building. It's got two different color sidings.
Yep.
But.
It matches with the architectural features of the home.
Personally, I think it looks fine, you know, but here, you know, are we, by doing what we're doing here by allowing the exposed metal fasteners, that's still, because that building is a it's, it's an outbuilding, it's, would that, that still, that would still only be up to half metal siding?
Today, yeah, based on the guidance that you guys gave me a month ago or whatever, I would only allow half of that structure to be sided with metal.
Did that building slip under the radar?
I don't, I think he, what Marshall said was before they changed the.
Yeah, okay, so, so the, the code before it was revised to read what it reads today said no metallic appearing siding and the, the reference based on the original writing of the code is they were trying to prohibit, prohibit that galvanized not the ribbed siding, but the, the galvanized what would corrugated siding within the residential zones.
Correct.
So when they started coming out with these architectural features, there's another house built out on the bay off of Bay, Bayview Avenue or Bayview Loop that uses an even more diverse architectural metal. It's got some really heavy ribs to them that doesn't look like any of the metal you've ever seen on a shop. And so that was another example of architectural metal that we felt like should be considered for residential zones. The one that we're talking about over on Bass Avenue, when we looked at that, it didn't have that metallic metal finish like you would on a corrugated, galvanized, you know, basically your old barn buildings. We do have one or two of those in town that have deteriorated to the point where they, it's, it's understandable that the, that the planning commission would look at those as something of an eyesore in the residential zones, but as you get into these more modern rib style structures, you know, it was hard to pick out that it was a metal building. I, like I said, I drove by it several times before I even noticed that it was a, you know, and then the building official and I talked about it and, and we both agreed that that we would allow these type of structures because it's not the, what we felt like was the intended prohibition was the galvanized, you know, the galvanized corrugated stuff. So we got that building built. That was just prior to my tenure as the planner. And then we allowed another one to be built over on Duck Lake Drive. It's a very nicely finished two-tone. Sits well with the neighborhood, but but those two were the last two, and then the planning commission made recommendations for a code change. The council approved it. And, and we basically lumped everything into if it's got metal siding, period.
Okay, well, I, I'm just looking at, on, on this, what I, what I had drafted as revision and maybe I misunderstood what we talked about before, maybe I didn't, I don't know, but if, if anybody's got it printed or looking at it under J one, I did revise it to say architectural ribbed metal siding is permitted for outbuildings, accessory structures and non-accessory structures. Which would here, would basically change what you, what we were just talking about, since that building's an outbuilding or that be considered a garage and back to the other.
It's an accessory structure, a garage, no matter how, you, you've got two different types of accessory structures. One is a permitted, like a garage over two hundred square feet. And then you've got your unpermitted or permitted, non-accessory structure.
So maybe we need to take a look at that statement and see if that's really something, because I, I might have, must have been under the, I was under the understanding that we were going to allow metal siding to be used for outbuildings and accessory structures and not accessory structures, but maybe it should only be for unpermitted accessory structures and non-accessory structures, basically.
Yeah, the sheds, yeah. And, and that's where our biggest problem is at right now is with the unpermitted accessory structures and the permitted non-accessory structures. That's where we're ending up with a lot of non-compliance right now.
So, so, but maybe, I mean, with the changes in siding and the way it looks and feels, why would we not allow it everywhere? I mean, that would be my big question. It's not the corrugated. I mean, I understand wanting to say we don't want a bunch of old army barracks looking, looking buildings in town. I get that. But with the, the new sightings that they have and they just keep getting better and better, most people I think looking at them wouldn't realize that that's in fact a metal siding. So maybe what we should go back to is what the code said before, no non-metallic appearing siding like corrugated or whatever will be allowed in, for any kind of unit, any kind of a, a, a building, whether it's a primary residence, whether it's an accessory or non-accessory. Because I think we're going to shoehorn ourselves into maybe some really great new building materials that help and desire and everything else and not be able to utilize them. And if the real intent was not to have that corrugated stuff that we know is going to decompose over time, why wouldn't we appear, why wouldn't we allow the more modern stuff?
I, I agree with Carrie and, and the building that changed my mind was the one on Duck Lake Drive, the garage.
Yeah.
That's gorgeous.
I didn't know.
And then come that way because the pole barn concept is a lot cheaper to stick through.
But I mean, we should require, I mean, that one looks nice because it's two tones, got two different colors and that. It has, it has basically, it says up here as far as it has, it has two different, you know, it has a, a, a primary and a, and an accent. Whereas I've got a couple of pole barns on my street that were probably done, they look like they were probably fifteen, twenty years, that are all one color.
No windows.
No windows and they look
Yeah.
like a storage building. Okay, so maybe if we're going to allow metal, you know, metal siding, a hundred percent metal siding, maybe we, we should specify that there needs to be a primary and an accent. Just same with, same with the, with the house.
So what wording, so what wording do we need to come up with to take into account this new technology going forward?
Some of the wording that I think is already in code is that it needs to meet the architectural, the, there has to be an architectural tie to the primary structure.
I, I.
Meaning they look and feel the same.
I, three states, both attached and detached garages must be kept in keeping with the home's architectural design finishes. But I think we could say that's not just garages, but accessory, non-accessory units must be in keeping.
Just add those in right there in number three for a rock.
Yeah. They're basically all structures.
I think I, I mentioned at the last meeting where I moved from, almost all new construction was metal. And, and, and it rusts. I don't know if they had exposed fasteners. I wasn't really familiar with that term at the time, but you know, and they're all beautiful homes.
Well, I propose that we make the changes and bring it back next time to see if we can come to some agreement.
I'll try to reword that now before, before the next meeting.
Super.
Then that gets rid of the fifty percent rule. It gets kind of rid of all that language.
It, it makes it a little easier to enforce. I guess the, the one thing that, that I, you know, we've got a, a pending litigation right now over exposed metal fasteners on the roof in the residential zones and I don't, I, I would like for you guys to at least consider whether in the residential zones, you want to allow for exposed fastener metal roofing or or maintain the current, which is the standing seam or hidden fasteners, at least for the roofing.
We, we had discussed last time and, and I had changed it here to say that we would allow exposed metal fasteners only on non-accessory structures and unpermitted accessory structures and permitted uninhabited outbuildings, like a, a, a pole barn or something. That's what we had agreed on last time.
Yeah, and, and that's easy enough to enforce.
And we, and, but.
I'd be a little concerned about a, a residence, you know.
Yeah, and, and it specifically says here, number three on, on H, exposed fastener, ribbed or architectural metal roofing is not permitted for primary structures, accessory dwelling units and any other inhabited structure.
That sounds good.
Works.
Yeah.
Good.
Do you agree that we'll bring it back next time with those changes?
And just one other thing to, there, I'm, I know at the last meeting you stated forty nine percent and Roy mentioned, well, I thought we agreed on forty nine percent. I listened to the, to the record, because I couldn't remember if it was forty nine percent one, and our exact quote was we're gonna, we were gonna allow metal accents up to half. So that's how I wrote it as up to fifty percent.
Okay. Okay. The split hairs at that point.
Yeah.
Forty nine percent and, and I like, well, I could, I just wanted to make sure I wrote it exactly the way it was stated at the meeting, so.
Okay. So the next item on the agenda is political signs. Now, I know that this is something that we're not going to get done today. There's no doubt in my mind that we'll have another good spirited discussion. Let's try, try to do a Reader's Digest version if we can in interest of time. But Dan, you took this on?
Yeah, I took this on and the sign, underneath the sign code, underneath section B, temporary signs, number six is the political sign portion of it. So but in the definitions, I thought the definition of political sign was on. Under the sign requirements, where we had trouble the last election was a political sign shall have a maximum height of five feet. And it did, and I added as major from, measured from ground directly below the sign to the highest point of the sign or its support. So if you've got a five foot pole in the ground and it sticks up five feet and your sign's way down here, you're fine if it goes right up. The next section I, was the sign area and I added something to that, because it said minimum square, six square feet in area. It didn't say, and I added, in the case of double sided signs, twelve square feet is allowed. Nobody challenged that, but we had a lot of, a lot of political signs with both sides. And if you read it, it only had six, you could say, kind of take down. I added about what the material could be. This may be a little wordy. The sign must be made on nondurable materials, including not limited to paper, corrugated board, flexible, bendable or foldable plastics or foam core vinyl canvas or vinyl mesh products of less than twenty ounce fabric vinyl signs and vinyl mesh products without obviously that polyometric plasters and signs painted or drawn on water soil paints and chocks. I saw another one the other day that, that might be a little better. This, this gives into too much detail, I think. So I, I, I would like, suppose I change that, come up with a different ones. Also added, closed signs must be removed if the sign needs repair, is worn, laptided or creates a public nuisance. The mayor asked us to look into political signs on city right of way. And Steve pointed out, you can't do that, but what Steve pointed out to me was if you have a sidewalk and you have a grass grip and then you got a curb, that cannot be reserved. But right aways can be. City right aways, they can do because of. City right aways, they can do because of, um. So people don't have accidents and not.
Safety.
Safety, safety issues. So I think that's easily fixed on this. I didn't do that. Cause I think it says, instead of St. Paul's, are allowed on city right away. To say, political signs are not allowed on city right away. Okay, and then the other one that the mayor asked us to look at was whether we could restrict signs in the downtown quarters. I don't think we can. And I found something, uh, on Freedom Forum. And it says restrictions directed only at political signs are content-based. And the speech can only be limited if the government meets a higher burden of demonstrating a compelling interest. Usually protecting voters' harassment or interfering with voting process. So I don't think you can.
Yeah, so I thought it was very interesting because, um, we looked at, uh, what Nicole said. From our, our MRSC, and I know, Dan, you had communicated with them. Uh, cause you have a, a contact there. I put in a request for information. And, um, I, I think, well, they didn't respond to me because I think they felt they already responded.
I tried to fill out the form, I couldn't do it right, so I said, hell without.
Oh, Paul, yeah. So I, I filled out the form and I didn't get a response yet, so, uh, but I thought that their, uh. Their document was very interesting, cause it cites US Supreme Court decision Reed versus Town and Gilbert. Gilbert, Arizona, as well as a Washington State, uh, Supreme Court decision. For the Collier Court, which was the Washington State, uh, decision. Political science cannot be prohibited in the areas between the street and sidewalk. Uh, commonly referred to as the parking strip or planting strip. As these areas are considered a traditional public forum. However, political and other temporary signs, because that's one of the things listed here with the Supreme Court. You can't differentiate between a sign or a political sign. They all have to be treated in the same manner. That, uh, may be prohibited in many portions of the right of way, including medians. Traffic circles and the roadway itself, sidewalks and areas that would cause safety concerns. So. That's kind of the bottom line here. Um, to not allow them in just a certain area, as I had a discussion. Uh, I don't think we can do that. Uh, but in certain places, areas, I think we can.
Yes.
So, uh, you know, that's, uh. That's something we can look towards, um.
I, I'm not sure how you really define that. Because you get all these street corners and the city has a right of way on every street. And how enforceable is that gonna be? You know, you, you, you go to the post office, you, you know, come out and I'm looking at five signs.
Right.
So I, I got some.
It's, it's gonna be a tough one if we wanna change it. I mean, the Washington State Collier Court upheld a ten-day post-election sign removal. Whereas our code says seven days. And it says clearly in here, you can write something that's less than that. But there's no guarantee it will hold up in court if anybody challenges it. Yeah, less, you know, whether they would or not. And then it always comes down to, well, who put the sign up in the first place? It is clear, however, I cannot go put a sign on someone's property. Their private property without their permission. That is clear in all the cases. And is clear in our code, by the way.
Yeah, and I, I, I did break that out because I, it was. Uh, lumped in with a few things, and so I broke that out. So it was more clear.
Now, I know Steve, you did some work on this as well.
Yes, and.
So do you have anything you'd like to add?
I have. And and I'll try to keep it Reader's Digest, but, uh, the thing that I wrote up, roar out. Uh, and as far as I'm concerned, what Dan wrote up, I mean, great, great ideas, but all this stuff is illegal. According to the Reed versus Town of Gilbert. The town, that specifically states that you cannot differentiate between political signs. Or any other signs. You can only refer to them and and some communities are doing this as either commercial. Or non-commercial signs. We, our whole temporary sign code is out of compliance to this. Uh, because we not only differentiate between political signs, we can talk about garage sale signs. We talk about real estate signs. We talk about construction signs. This is all contrary to the court case. Uh, and I, and it's in that, all in that same article that, that, uh, that you have there, Mark, which I was hoping that everybody else would have it forwarded to. Because there is a lot of, basically, it says that, um, it says a stream, a, a town sign code. That treats various categories of non-commercial signs, based on the information they convey violates the First Amendment. And it also states that, and it also recommends in that article that political signs should not be called out in a sign code. Or regulated differently than any other non-commercial signs. Um, Dan sent me some, cause he had mentioned, the, the biggest difference we had before this was. Whether we could regulate signs on private property. And he stated that there were some communities that did that and, okay, I, I asked him if, if he could send me some examples, cause he had done more research than me. Cause I really wanted to see how they did it. And how they do that is because they don't refer political signs at all. Every, there was ten cities that he sent and every single one of them, the word political does not, is not in their code. Everything is just temporary signs. It says temporary signs and they regulate and how they regulate it, some do, some don't, but they regulate. How many temporary signs you can have in your yard, the size of temporary signs. And and so, and that refers to all, whether it's for your garage sale or whatever. Um, there's, um, actually the best, most of them had some sort of degree of vagueness, but the best one. Is the city of Wenatchee, and if anybody, I downloaded it, if anybody wants to see it, their code was very specific. Types of signs, where, where you could place it in your right of way in, on a private residence, where you could go on your private properties. Or commercial cap properties could put them in the, in and out of the, very concise, um. Not, no content mentioned whatsoever, but it's very, and, and maybe we wouldn't agree. Well, there's some things we'd wanna change because they don't, you know, first of all, there's, they have no restrictions on what you can put on private property. And, uh, but anyways, I think we need to, at this point, I would like to ask the commissioners, look at some of these other city codes. Look at this, uh, and if you want, I can send you this stuff. Uh, we need to look at it and really think about what we're doing here, because I think we need to change the whole. Temporary code, sign code to comply with the, uh, with the court, uh, ruling. And I noticed that a lot of the other communities, all, a lot of the revision dates. And actually, they had actually revision, the, the, the ordinance changes. And they are all referred to the Reed versus Town of Gilbert. So I think we really, I, I think between now and the next meeting, and Mark, I think this is a big enough issue that. Uh, I think we might need to have, uh, a meeting where this topic is half the meeting or maybe the main topic of the meeting. Because this is not gonna go away fast.
It is not, and you're right, and, um. There was some movements that said we didn't even need to look at it, but clearly with the discussion, it's something that we need to look at. And by the way, we were asked to look at it, so if there's something we can change, then so be it. If there's nothing we can change. So be it, but, um, yeah, I'll put it back on the agenda next time. Any other commissioners have any comments? On this subject?
The only comment I would make is to keep in mind what caused part of the problem in the last election season, right? It was not only the ambiguity, but what is height, and I think even with having sign height from the ground up. Would make where the other sign was not legal anymore, cause they had it on a billboard, so. Is, do we really wanna restrict that? I don't think we can. It's not in a right of way. It's on basically private property at that point.
Anybody who wants me to send them the Wenatchee one, Wenatchee one is so clear on all of that, that, uh. If you, if, if you want it, if.
If you would, anything that you send to other commissioners, do it individually.
Right.
So it's not, make it a quorum, yes.
It's just, yeah. But it's, it was very, I, it really changed my whole opinion on this thing once I started reading the other city codes.
Sure, so, um, this came up at my most recent, um, meeting with the mayor. Because at our last meeting, if you remember, we were talking about people are seeing banners. Of different sizes, different shapes, whether on houses, fences, holes. And, um, I said that, you know, we were, we were still looking at this to see if we could. Come up with anything that would assist ocean shores in the election season coming up in twenty twenty-five. And, um, what I was told at that point is they have consulted. They, the mayor and the city administrator has consulted with the lawyer on this particular issue. And the lawyer told them not to even touch it. Cause obviously there have been some complaints that have come in about the banners that have been seen around town for this election season. And the, the city attorney said, just, don't, don't even go there. So with that in mind. We need, we need to look at these political signs in that, um, what is going to work here? What can we do based on the Supreme Court ruling, the Washington State, uh, Supreme Court ruling? And, uh, what's enforceable by, uh, code enforcement here? And, uh, so, yeah, the discussion will continue. Yes, Thor.
Really can't do anything about political signs.
I agree with the assessment. I think we might be able to adjust some placement where. You can't put them in this or this area for safety concerns.
That we can't discuss the size or whatever.
Well, I, I think the size is fair game, um, if we can get, um. A consensus, we can get it voted past here and then get counsel to agree with us on.
Size as long as it's not different than others, other types of signs.
Right, we can discuss signs, size, as long as it applies to all.
That is, that is true. You cannot differ, it's clear.
Real estate signs temporary or are they permitted? Or is there a difference?
Well, some cities actually require permits for, for them, some don't, it, it varied. Um, but, but it was, but if you, they all. Just about, um, for the most part, the other cities, it's all included as temporary signs. And like I said, there's no differentiation between political or, because they, and, and. If you look at the dates, they went back and changed it after this court case. Because it's, it's, it's just either, um, it's either non-commercial or as Bremerton calls it. Non-commercial speech, oh, and, and then.
Except for political signs, the biggest issues this city has with signs are real estate signs. Uh, being placed in the right of way, uh, or too large, something, our, our requirement's four square feet. Which is probably the smallest of most signs I've seen. I don't have the issue in a way, but it would nice to be consistent about that. And if, if four square, square feet is our rule, then is that the political signs, I don't know, interesting to talk about.
Well, if you read the Wenatchee ones, they're real clear on all the. Commer, a real estate sign would actually be considered a commercial sign, not a not commercial.
So you can differentiate between the two, uh, based on the court decisions. So we'll have to look at size, uh, uh, as one of the criteria. Um, yeah, the, the biggest problem, as I was briefed. Um, there's the one glaring example, that one notwithstanding, was people putting signs in. Other people's yards without permission.
And, and I got a question on that one too, because you go up to Ocean Lake Way. At the corner of Ocean Lake Way in Point Brown, there's a corner there, it's got all these different political signs, okay? I looked on the flat map, that is, that's properties, is a privately owned property as far as I can see. Okay, so all those signs, I'm sure since every different candidate, I'm sure they don't have the permission of the. Private property owner. So, I mean, if that's, if you, if the mayor wants to limit signs in the city right of way. I mean, those signs are probably, you, all you'd have to do is check with the property owner and say, hey, you want these signs here.
Well, that, that is a true, that is a true statement, that they do congregate in those places.
Cause they're vacant lots.
But do they congregate legally? And then, yeah, it's, you're exactly right. Does someone contact the property owner and go, you know, there's twelve signs on your lot? And if they don't care, then that's great, but is anybody gonna do that? But that's exactly the, the biggest concern, as I was briefed, that signs showing up on. Private property without permission. Now, who's going to enforce that? You know, that's the question. But, um, I think it's, I think it's already in the code as it is right now. But, um, so I think placement is important for us to look at. Um, the, the court cases are pretty clear, you can't differentiate, um, but.
Now, now the signs outside the city entrance there on that before. Are those, is that in the city or is that outside of the city?
Oh, that's a really good, I think it's county until you hit.
On, so on the south, on the south side of Damon Road, that's unincorporate or unplatted city of Ocean Shore property. So you're within the, you're, you're within the city limits, but it's not platted, they're unplatted lots. So this, the code does carry jurisdiction onto those properties, so.
But who, the city owns them or individuals own them?
Uh, yeah, I was gonna say, I think Twin Star owns, you know, right out, and then you've got, you've got Twin Star, and then you've got the right of way where the ditch is at. You've got the bank and coast access and so on.
Well, technically, if Twin Star said, then want any of those signs, or those signs should be gone, cause it's.
I, I believe that to be the case, yeah. I mean, you get into one of those deals where, um, a survey. Sometimes is required to actually distinguish, are we on the lot or off of the lot? And if you don't have a survey marker, it's a crap shoot.
And makes enforcement difficult, so, okay, well, yeah, Dan.
Um, so we don't spin our wheels. Uh, wouldn't it be prudent, um, legal tell us our temporary sign, what we should do? Well, how is it illegal? So we can do, cause we could sit here and draft things all day long and come up with another, it's just garbage. And, and I think that would be prudent, them to come back and say, I've read your temporary sign section, that's your code. And yes, it is illegal, and this is what you should do to fix it. Not give us the words, just what are the areas that. Yeah.
Are they saying to let it go for now because they know our code is out of whack and there's no point in kind of giving out any other information right now?
Yeah.
Cause our code is what it is right now.
I think they need to be aware of the Reed Town of Gilbert and have a look at our, I mean, I, I'm agreeing with, let, let the attorneys say, hey, yeah, okay, this doesn't. You know, now we got, we have to change this. And we have to either rewrite the whole temporary sign code, which my interpretation, I think we do.
Yeah, I'm not sure about that, but I, I'm, I'm open, so.
Yeah.
I will take that up.
And then there's another, we, we've got an issue with, uh, one of our council members has a two biggest sign on his lot. He look right across the post office and there's a big sign for a judge. And it's more than six square feet.
It is, yeah, I noticed that. I'm just, I drove.
Our ordinance is very vague regarding public property or private property.
It's, it's public, it's private property.
Yeah, and it's definitely private property, um, but yeah, if we looked at the size of the sign, based on what we've. Currently got in our code, it exceeds that. That is true. Uh, when I drove by and. Uh when I drove by and I saw that, I'm going, well, I hope that the owner of the property has approved it being there. Cause since that was the biggest problem expressed to me in the last.
Oh, I'm sure, I'm sure, yeah.
Right, so, but I don't know that. I haven't asked the particular owner of that property. Uh if he's allowed that, but yeah, it it does exceed the size in our code. Correct.
There's a requirement in that case, is it commercial sign or what is it?
Well, see, that's the thing. We have a chart that shows the sign. Um, it's.
Temporary.
Yes, temporary signs. And we do have um. No, it's not a commercial sign. It's definitely a temporary sign. It's definitely a political sign. It's definitely a political sign. And it says.
Non.
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 Yeah. Got our, you know, the charts in here. There it is. Okay. So identification sign standards for wall signs, freestanding signs. Single-family residential, six feet high, thirty-two square feet area, one per subdivision entrance. Multiple-family, commercial and industrial, one and one-half square feet of sign for each linear feet of the wall. Containing. The main public entrance to the building or fifty square feet, whichever is greater. Well, that's an empty lot. It's a big sign, but it's a big lot, so um, yeah, it's a great question.
And my question is too, is that chart pertain to both temporary and permanent signs or just permanent signs? Because it's, the chart is before section that refers to temporary signs.
Specific sign requirements, identification signs. Uh shall be in accordance with subsections A one to three of this section. Uh and then it just talks about wall signs and freestanding signs. That's all it says.
It really doesn't differentiate.
It doesn't, which I suppose is good if we're not gonna differentiate things, but yeah. Then it talks about commercial or industrial buildings. Uh every single-family residence, multiple-family residence complex. For shopping centers, planned industrial parks, or multiple occupancy, non-residential buildings. The building face or wall shall be calculated separately for each separate occupancy. But in no event will be allowed uh will the allowed area or any separate occupancy be less than six feet. Uh it doesn't, you know, it's interesting that it talks about freestanding signs. Uh it doesn't say anything about empty lots. Which that does. The other section that we have is political signs. Such signs shall not exceed a height of five feet nor an area of six square feet. And then it goes into removal after seven days. Such signs are allowed on city right away out of the most strip zone. May not be placed in any median or any signpost or utility pole. Signs may not be placed on private property without the owner's permission and shall not obstruct traffic visibility. Which. It's on private property. It doesn't. Cause any safety issues, but the size of the sign is a.
Good question. No, it's well-placed. It it.
Yeah.
I know we're not. Talking about getting into the entire sign code. Hope not anyway.
Right.
But uh, you know, this this may be a off-the-wall comment, but. Unless the city chooses to vigorously enforce these sign ordinances, we could always choose to leave it alone.
We can, and the answer might be back um to um those that asked. Are, there's just nothing we can do. I mean, you know, based on the court cases, there's, there's nothing we can do. What we have is private property already in the code. Um, the one thing that we can look at maybe is safety. So placement of signs that may cause. Safety issues.
We may be able to limit the number if we don't differentiate. Right?
But the, yeah, we might, so.
And that's how.
Right.
So can you only put on a lot three signs or can you put twelve signs? And as Commissioner Barry mentioned, a lot that is vacant, the owner might not be currently in Ocean Shores. There's sometimes eight or ten signs on that lot and that person may not even know it.
Well, and the one you've been talking about on Ocean Lake Way.
Yes.
You might be able to answer because is that still state property since the highway was shifted over years ago?
Well, it's not highway. It's it's all, it's it's city right of way.
City right of way.
There it's a double-width right of way for two lanes and uh. And and I think the signs that that you guys are talking about might be out in that right of way. I don't know. Are there any on the?
It doesn't matter if they're in the right way or it's it, the signs that are in the right of way are, you can only put them in the right of way if you have the adjoining property owner's permission. Okay, and so if that whole corner there, if it's right of way and right of way, it's still, it's still adjoining that property. And that property is a, it's a, I know it's a B one or B two lot.
I guess I missed that part of the.
Somebody must own it.
Oh, yeah.
Sure.
Yep, you know, the same thing on the other side of the bridge. There's a vacant residential lot and it has signs, the same thing. And then you go down and on um. Okay. Now, in uh Mount Olympus, there's a couple corners where there's vacant, a vacant lot, and sure enough, they got signs. Still got Kennedy signs there.
Setback, my understanding that the water meter on. Properties is a setback from the water meter out to the street. That's owned by the county or the municipality in case they ever wanna put curbs in.
It is owned by the city here.
Yep.
It's on the plat map, but the streets, side of the streets have different right. My street has sixty, some of them are fifty.
Very, and you can't use utility, any of the utilities as a survey mark because there, we've got them that are. You know, on private property, way out in the right of way, right on the line. It's a, it's a mixed match. So everything is based on a registered, a legal, Washington State certified survey bar.
But you going back to the community limit, some of these cities, Gig Harbor says you can limit, they have a limit of four per lot on private property. Uh another one has, each sign can be four square feet, but you're only allowed thirty-two square feet. Per, and this is, and this is private property, so. In total, so this, so each city, they do have, you know, varying, that's how they govern it. But it's for, it's temporary signs.
Yeah, so limiting that might, might be difficult getting that approved.
I just wish they would pick them up in the political seasons.
Well, that was it. You know, that's the thing, and but even the court case says it's hard to determine who put them there in the first place, right? Just because there's a a political candidate's name on it, trust me, that political candidate didn't put it there, right? So who did? And uh, no.
I gotta say, last year, most of them were picked up in a couple of days.
Yeah, they were.
Yeah.
It's not an issue.
That was.
I think the 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 races we have going on now, it's more of an issue because they don't live here.
Right, I mean, there's still primary signs up. Yeah, there's still Kennedy signs up. He's out, you know, so.
There's still.
There's still a lot in that are, you know, could be picked up.
Okay, so to be continued on this one as we move forward. Uh the next item on the agenda is weed burners. Now, this is one that uh there's a differing of opinion, so um. Uh on what we should do, there's nothing in the code covering weed burners. And some people really like their weed burners. Other people don't like weed burners. So how do we address weed burners? Um, the fire department would like to have them banned because they've caused many fires. Um, some almost catastrophic, but fire department was able to put them out. Um, they would like to see them banned. Um, because according to them, uh when the weed burners are used to. Burn the weeds. The fire is traveling under. Whatever you're trying to burn and catching other brush or fences on fire. Um, now you could, you could say what, you you need to have um. A hose with you to do that. Well, that's great. Um, the fire department says there are several codes concerning it, but that's in the International Fire Code. Not in our code. As a homeowner. You're probably not gonna go look at the International Fire Code. For guidance on weed burners, if you even look. So do we need to put something in our code covering weed burners? And then if we do, how do we do it? Do we wanna ban them or ban them during? My question was, so what what I'm hearing is. You'd like to ban them maybe during burn bans. And I got yes from some. Uh no, that's not what I mean. I'd like them banned. Um, so the fire department votes on, they would like to see them banned. Because of the trouble that those have caused. And others I speak to would just like to see them banned during burn ban times. So I'm open. Um, you know, so what the fire department responded to me was. There are several codes regarding open, open burning and some that address the use of torches. Uh in that process, it's been the experience of the fire department. That these devices have caused several uncontrolled fires within the city, even when there is no burn ban in effect. Some leading to fires causing damage to structures and property, some leading to wildfire, uh wildland fires. This type of burning does not allow for the containment of the combustion process and therefore causes concern for the safety of people and property. So I would like some thoughts from commissioners on. Do we, three things really? Do we ban them? And if we ban them, do we ban them during burn bans? Or do we just ban them totally? Thoughts?
I I think if we're gonna ban total to make this bitter pill for some people to go down. Then we need to see the absolute statistics, how many and when, over what period of time were the incidences reported to? Right? Cause you'll hear people saying, well, I've never heard of any fire going on that was that catastrophic that caused that big of a deal. So I think that that would be helpful in having actual information unnumbered. Um.
I will answer that only that the most egregious example was uh given to me as. The Worldmark Hotel down south. Um, almost burned down because of it. That's, that's the poster child for this.
I went after their wall with a chainsaw to cut the fire out of the wall that had got all the way to the inside. So yeah, that that was probably the most catastrophic.
Yeah, were, were they actually burning?
They were burning weeds with. Although they're on the ground.
Followed it, yeah. So I will ask if there's any statistics that they could provide as the cause and and we'll go from there. Um, but yeah, that's the one that they just jumped out at me as the poster child. Um, for wanting to ban this type of burning device. Anything else?
There should be some regulations because if you drive around and you see. How how bad some of these individuals in town allow their driveway to get before they go out and torch them, you aren't gonna have problems.
Yeah, yeah, agreed. So, like I said, there's nothing in the code, our Ocean Shore's municipal code that addresses it. Fire code, yes, but not the municipal code, so.
Well, I know Kurt sent before the uh the last meeting, he uh he sent uh. Had a statement and it was in our, and he basically said that open, that the open burning. Shall be contained in an area not exceeding four foot diameter and thirty feet from structures and ten feet from property.
Yes.
Okay, and then you also need a burn permit. Okay, so I mean, if that's something that we, you know, that we gotta look at, so okay, well, yeah, you, but you need a permit. It's it's considered open burning. Um, and the four-foot diameter stuff, well, you could just take a torch and put it, all right, I'm, I just burned this four-foot diameter. I'm gonna go do the next four-foot diameter, you know, so. Oh, it's really not contained, apparently not, not contained based on what happened there. So um as far as, I guess, my opinion, I'm gonna stick with the same opinion I had last week, our last meeting, is I'm gonna defer to the fire department. And uh whatever they, whatever they want, uh I can't argue with them, so.
So that's, that's their uh position. They'd like to ban them. So we still need, I do have uh Kirk's. Uh I, you know, his statement here about ten feet from property lines, diameter thirty feet and structures. So I do have that wording from him, but.
I guess the only problem with that is, is when you're burning, it's gonna maybe follow outside of that.
Correct.
Area, right? And that's what you don't know is underneath there. Now, if you're in a gravel situation. If your driveway or your parking area is done correctly with red rock and. And black rock on top of it, you're less likely to have that event happen. But it's not impossible, cause you don't know maybe what was underneath there when it got cleared, how many old roots got laughter or or what have you, so.
They put on wood chips or.
Hopefully they didn't. Hopefully you're clearing a green and people could have a better job than that because that's just gonna collapse every time, but. Yeah, it's it's a real hard question.
I'll see if I can get statistics. Uh I know they gave me some examples, but I'll see if they have any hard statistics that we can use. It's, you know, it's.
Or maybe incidences per year or something. I don't know.
Right, I'll check. I'll ask the question.
Just one other thing, this may be irrelevant, but um they're used widely in my neighborhood and there's. There's the small gas canisters that are the size for gas stoves.
Hmm.
And then there's the three-gallon that you use for charcoal grills. And that one has a very large um.
No.
Nozzle on it.
Right, yeah, and I mean, my neighbor's got one too, you know, but um. I don't know. I don't have one, but that doesn't mean, you know, if someone's using them, they're not being safe. But from what I'm hearing, stuff travels and so it's sometimes beyond the control of the operator. Uh the way it works, not to any fault of their own, but.
And you may not even know. It might be another.
Right, until, yeah, until your next door neighbor's brush goes up. So anyways, more to follow on that one. Um, in terms, in terms of new business, um it's, it's come uh. Carrie and I have been talking a little bit back and forth about updating our handbook. Uh and uh so I think there's some provisions in there that need to be. I know it was done in twenty twenty-two. And when I mentioned it to the mayor, he goes, hey, that's current. Well, I get that. I get that. I get that. It was a great conversation. But the fact is, we've identified some things such as um. Composition of an interview theme for uh the planning commission. It's, it's out of date in there. And so let's just look at it all. So uh there's a hundred and fifty pages to it. So if the commissioners don't mind uh looking at certain areas, I just kind of. Threw some pages together. I'll take one, page one through one uh twenty-one. Who would like to take twenty-two through fifty? Well, let me just run down through these. So twenty-two through fifty is ethical policies. Fifty-one to sixty-seven, public hearings, sixty-eight to eighty uh MRSC reports. Uh eighty to one oh three um. The doctrine, one oh six to one sixteen is council meeting procedures and one seventeen to one fifty, the Open Public Meetings Act. Uh so.
Looks like ethics.
Take ethics, okay? Next one up is public hearings fifty-one to sixty-seven. Procedure, okay, so. Uh MRSC reports. Eighty to eighty.
What, what are?
It's MRSC is an agency that provides guidance to communities. That's a, it's a state form.
I see.
Did you wanna look at that?
Uh yeah, okay.
He does now.
And that is, um, what, what's that number?
Uh pa- from page sixty-eight to eighty in our planning commission handbook, which is available online. Uh eighty to one oh three um statutory doctrine. Anybody wanna look at that?
I I guess I'll take it. Nobody else, nobody else is jumping at it. What, what pages are those?
Eighty to one oh three.
Eighty to one oh three.
Yeah.
Statutory.
Yeah, doctrine. And. And, you know, there might not be anything that needs to be looked at, I mean, but if we look at it, come back, we can, uh, see if there is. Council meeting procedures, one oh four to one sixteen. You wanna do that, Dan?
No.
No. You wanna do the open?
Honest man.
You wanna do the Open Public Meetings Act? Let's, one seventeen to one fifty?
Sure.
No, might not. Thorn?
Sure, yeah.
Council meeting, uh, procedures, one oh four to one sixteen.
What are you looking for?
Just anything that looks out of the ordinary that needs to be updated. I mean, I've gone through the handbook several times, but, um, uh, the auditor identified a couple of things, so we need to, we need to look at it.
Uh, do, can we be informed of what the auditor thought or want us to try to come up with something?
No, no, it's, it's, I'm, I'm just gonna limit it that. Um, I don't wanna make anybody's look biased one way or the other, just look at it. If you see something that, um, you think might need to be adjusted, bring it back and then we can discuss it.
I think additionally, and you look, if you're looking through it and finding things that we're not doing that we're supposed to be, it's a form to educate us on.
Exactly, so, uh, in any case, that's, that's kind of where, where we're at.
When, when we redid this and I was the one who redid it.
Okay, so there you go.
So you just wanna keep it all, there you go.
No, but we only did, uh, sections one, we didn't do the rest of it.
Oh, okay. All right, so.
Those were, were the big areas.
Are more current.
More current than the others, cuz I know it was signed.
Well, yeah, and the state guidelines, that was just a straight coffee down. So it, that's a lot of it. So what were my sections?
Not section five.
From page one to one fifty, just kidding. Um, one seventeen to one fifty, Dan. I appreciate, yeah, I, I appreciate you looking at that. Um, it's just something that was brought to my attention and Carrie and I have been talking about it anyway, that we needed to, uh, to take a look at it, so it, it provides us that opportunity to do so.
We expect that to be on the next agenda.
Uh, it will be, so we come back with some stuff to discuss and it might be, I didn't see anything, okay, thanks. Thanks for checking.
You want me to give my answer now?
Sure.
I didn't see anything.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that, uh, I've, I've duly noted that, yes. Okay, um, the next item is, uh, membrane structures, uh, you might be interested in why that's back on. So had a meeting with, with the mayor and he, he called me and wanted me to come to a meeting with the owners of Ocean Porres. So the question was, how can we make this work? Well, and so, um, there was some give and take back and forth. All. Ocean Porres agreed to put power in from the existing structure to the membrane structure. Um, they wanted to know what, what's the problem? Well, the problem is you had heat in there. Problem is you had extension cords running through there. Um, the problem is, is that when it was certified under the COVID situation, um, we're still operating under the COVID situation, so we had a nice discussion about that. Um, so what we came up with is, um, if we close them down, there's jobs involved. Um, that, uh, it looks like with they're able, they're put power into the structure, um, the mayor is considering an executive order um, for the good of the community with some stipulations. There will be inspections of the facility, cuz I don't know, um, if the rating of the facility's been looked at. So we talked about that. Now, the owners of Ocean Porres said that the manufacturer said that it's good for the, for the life of, of the structure. Well, okay, this is an interesting environment in which we live, so. I don't have the executive order to share with you today, it's been written, it's being written. Um, so when I get it, I'll share it with you and, uh, we'll move forward.
So I have a question on this.
Okay. There is a part B that I haven't shared yet.
Fire has to meet the hundred and forty mile an hour requirement. How's it ever gonna meet that? That would be one.
Yeah.
Two would be, there's not enough restrooms in that facility as it is if we're gonna call it a permanent structure. So, so it's not, it, it's, well, porta potty is not, it, that, that's not part of it. And I would also say that I think that citizens should have an input to this too, because this sets a precedent potentially for every other business to follow down this path, so I, I almost feel like it should have to go through some type of a conditional use hearing or something like that. It, it, it just, it just feels like it should be more of a public thing than, than a meeting. Personally, because we are clearly violating some things here that are in our code. Clearly, and international building standards, give or take. Um, so in all transparency with government, I think that that's really how it should be and the citizens, at least within three hundred feet, should, should have a say and it should be a public hearing, that's just my personal feeling.
Gotcha.
Otherwise, it feels kind of like a backroom deal.
Yeah, so I haven't, like I said, uh, I haven't seen the executive, uh, executive order with the requirements listed. We talked about a lot of things, um, so we'll see. Um, we talked about the fact that we're still operating under the COVID guidelines. And is that the way we should be operating on, still under the COVID guidelines, so there was some discussion about that, um, in, in a positive way. And, uh, so we'll see, I just wanted to kind of give you a heads up that, uh, the meeting took place, um, the mayor is considering an executive order for the good of the community uh, with stipulation, so until, until I have it in front of me, I can't tell you what the wording is going to be, um, but I know, um, it's, it's forthcoming, so anyway, just a heads up.
What's B?
Pardon me to that?
There's a B or some R B.
Yeah, there is a part B, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna just. Yeah, so, okay, but wait, but the way, there, there is more, so depending on the success of the executive order, then part B kicks in. Where? Yeah. So, but until we get there, it's, it's a moot point. Okay, but I, I did say there was part B to it. Okay. So we've tried again to get our six hundred and fifty square feet and our forty percent rule through council. Uh, we haven't. And of course, with the budget cycle now, it's gonna be a while, but we are gonna change the, the wording of the ADUs, if rented must be leased or rented for more than thirty days. And the primary owner of the residence must occupy the primary residence to rent the ADU. Some words like that, because of some concerns. Uh, first off by council, that ADUs in any district, yes. Uh, that surprised some people. The other thing is, um, concern from the public during comments that, oh, you're telling us that some, there may be two rented places on the same property, who's gonna, who's gonna monitor them? You know, with the owner somewhere else. And so we're gonna, you know, change that the owner must occupy the primary residence to rent the ADU and we'll see how that goes. Um, the other thing I'd like to share is on October thirtieth, there'll be a ribbon cutting ceremony at eleven o'clock at the convention center for our biking and walking subcommittee. Um, we've got blue zones, uh, providing a bike maintenance, uh, rack that will be installed permanently at the convention center. And then ribbon cutting, a couple of speeches, and then the ocean shore outer loop. There'll be a ride inviting the community for that. So.
You have time on that?
Eleven o'clock. So. Yeah.
Two questions, both previous comment.
Yes.
With, uh, the discussion at the council, I presume, was to make sure that the ADU was rented only only in areas that the owner occupied the main.
Yes.
Did they, are they concerned about this main house being a second home? It's occupied occasionally.
Um, the concerns were really twofold, one, we had one council member recuse themselves because they have an ADU and didn't wanna benefit financially from it. And then the other concern from the council was they didn't realize that you could have an ADU in any district. So that was that, and then the, the public concern was the two rentals on the one property.
The other question is that did the council have any objections to the other portions of the proposed ordinance, six fifty and whatever?
None, zero, we've, no. No, we've, we just keep getting, cuz they're combined, we just keep getting, it's an all or nothing proposition, so we're at nothing. We'll, we'll go back to it, I mean, I was, my nickname in the military was Bulldog for a reason. So yes, we, we will go back to it once the, you know, the budget process has been completed.
That's the one thing at a time to consider, there you go.
I'm hoping and I've already talked to Sarah, Sarah, to break it out, so six fifty, forty percent, one thing, ADU, another. Okay. Any commission, commissioners reports?
You can be, on, on the, uh, what the mayor's proposing to do for Ocean Porres, are they gonna have it so it's, it has to be ratified by city council? Uh, like the last one did?
I I'm gonna guess the answer to that is yes. I believe that in our discussion, it, it had to, what they'd like to do is submit it to us and have us talk about it, vote on it, and then go to council for approval. And then based on that, part B may kick in, we'll see.
Okay.
Yeah. So yeah, I believe it requires council's approval.
So if it gets council approval, it gets, it asked over before, so people make public comment.
Yeah, I don't know the exact process, I just know that I'm waiting to see what, they asked me if I wanted to write it and I respectfully declined. So yeah, so it's being, it's being drafted, I'm assured of that. So we'll, we'll, uh, we'll talk about it when I get it. Good. Any commissioners reports? Public comments. Good afternoon.
Afternoon.
How are you doing?
Good.
Nothing more to say?
Okay, super.
Any public comment from afar?
Hi, Mark, I have a couple of public comments.
Yeah, Jane.
So, uh, number one, I just wanted to go back to, I'm glad that was brought forward as far as the explore the shores, uh, because I agree on several points, until you, until you have a lot of buy-in from the businesses, the whole theme thing is just, I believe, out of reach for now. Um, but the city, you know, is already using explore the shores and it works with pretty much in the aspect, explore the shores, see our wood carvings, explore the shores, see our art galleries, you know, explore the shores, see the go-kart track. Um, so I just, I'm glad that was, was, uh, sent forward on that also and looking forward to having a town hall on that also. Um, on the sign code, I brought this up last time and I apologize, I was gonna get you guys the information, but this was brought up before by the previous, uh, board chair. And there is an actual legal definition of sign height. And so I think that's something you guys need to look at, a- and the legal definition is from ground to the bottom of the sign, so. Um, but that is, there is a legal definition for that. Um, and then with the rest of it, you know, I, I think we need to stick with the state codes, um, state RCWs and, and any, any law binding on that, then going too far off on our own, because like brought up over and over again, um, you, you know, we, we've really gotta watch what we're doing legally with that, so I think if we stick with the RCWs for the major part on that, um, that, that would probably be the best bet for the city going forward. So anyway.
On that.
Yeah, so, um, and if I can get it to you, um, I, I'll try and find it, but everywhere I looked in all the legalities, there is a legal definition for sign height, uh, as it is listed in our, our ordinance, so anyways, that's all.
Thank you, appreciate it, Jane.
Yep.
Anyone else?
Susan, anything?
Yes, thank you, Mark, I was just a little confused, maybe you could just go over it once more. On the executive order, you said that there may or may not be a plan B, could you just explain that again as to why or why not there would be one?
Well, all I know is, and I haven't seen it, so all I know is, uh, there may be a plan B and I'll just leave it at that now.
Comment at the end. Susan's on there, uh, could you really?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what Jane said.
Well, we didn't either, actually.
I think she mentioned my name, I don't know what she was saying, maybe she forgot to mute herself. Um, thank you, so that we will just wait and we will see that that executive order will be coming to the planning commission first, is that, that correct?
That is the expectation, yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
You're welcome. Okay. Our next meeting will be October twenty-second, twenty twenty-four at two PM here in the Ocean Shores Library. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Secretary next.
Secretary for next meeting is Thorn Ward.
I'm gonna be out of town that day, okay, excellent.
Okay, I will make a statement here. Steve, could you do that?
Yeah, I can, yeah, I can do it, cuz I won't be here in, um, one of the meetings in November.
Okay, well, yeah, okay, that'll be great. Thanks for that.
Uh, Friday.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
On.
Adjourn three twenty-seven.